Good afternoon. I will call to order the Minneapolis City Planning Commission meeting for April 11th. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Magrino, Slack, Lupey, Pierre, and Vrelin. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the March 28th meeting. I have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion in a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to organize the agenda. We'll determine which items will be on consent and which items we'll discuss. There are hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. So, starting at the top, item one is the Portland Tower RLS at 516 8th Street South. That's a registered land survey. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item two is the Star Tribune sign replacement at 801st Street North. That's an expansion of a nonconforming use. We'll discuss that item. Item three is Downtown East Phase Two Radisson Red at 619 3rd Street South. That is a conditional use permit. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item four is Walgreens at 2640 through 2650 Hennepin Avenue South. That's a site plan review and a minor subdivision. We will discuss item four. And item five is the 1400 Park Avenue Apartments at 1400 Park Avenue, 627 14th Street East and 622 15th Street East. Several applications for a new multifamily building there. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. So, our agenda as amended is items one, three, and five will be on consent, and we will discuss items two and four. I may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is the Committee of the Hall Consent Agenda. And Vice President Slack, do you have an update for us?
Thank you, President Brown. At the March 31st, 2016 Committee of the Hall, we had one item. It was a land acquisition for 1501 West River Road North, and the recommended motion was approval of the staff report that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right. And I will take that as a motion to find that acquisition consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That's item one, item three, and item five. Is there anyone wishing to speak on those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We'll move on next to our items for discussion, and we'll start with item two, the Star Tribune sign replacement. Ms. Smith, is staff.
The item before you is located at 801st Street North. This is located just to the west of the Mississippi River at the intersection of Plymouth, approximately Plymouth Avenue North and Second Street North. The application is for a 408-square-foot sign that would replace an existing sign on the Star Tribune building, and it'd be facing the onsite parking lot that's between the building and Plymouth Avenue North. There are several zoning districts that apply to this site, and the one I draw your attention to is the R6 zoning district. That's one of the reasons that we're triggering this expansion of a nonconforming use application. So, the applicant is applied for an expansion of a nonconforming use because in the R6 district, you wouldn't be allowed to have this sign. It's a new sign that is proposed to illegally nonconforming use. It's exceeding the maximum area and height that would normally be allowed under the code. However, there is an existing sign that is already the exact same size, and so the fact that the new sign is illuminated is triggering this expansion of nonconforming use application. Here are a few images just to show you where the existing sign is located. It is a painted wall sign, white paint. It shows the former logo of the company, and it faces the onsite parking lot, as I mentioned, and it is visible from the intersection of Plymouth and Second. As you can see, the building wall is 161 feet long, 54 feet tall. Most of it is metal panel. It's this textured metal panel, and the sign would be along this, in this area of the elevation. So, as you can see, the existing and proposed sign would be the exact same dimensions and height. The new sign would be not painted, but it would be an aluminum backer pan with individual lettering that has black perforation on the top so that at night, it would actually appear illuminated, just Star Tribune, the individual lettering, but during the day, it would appear black. The lettering, because of the internal illumination, there would be about a nine-inch projection away from the building wall in total. And this just shows you the sign plan. So, the applicant has submitted an expansion of a nonconforming use application and must meet these findings. I have these for reference in case we need to look at them later. The staff has recommended approval of the application as proposed, so any permits that come in would need to match exactly what has been submitted to the City Planning Commission. In addition, the Heritage Preservation Commission reviewed this application earlier in the year and approved it with a few conditions related to design, and they just reiterate what's already there. The backer pan shall be painted metallic gray or anodized aluminum. The height of the backer pan shall not exceed 10 feet 3 inches, and there are no conditions of approval recommended as part of this application. So, the staff has received one letter of support from the Neighborhood Association that is included in your packets already, and then since the publication of the staff report, we've received concerns from a neighboring property owner who has concerns about the illumination in particular of the sign, and will be speaking to those points, but basically wants to ensure that the illumination is exactly as proposed to the Commission tonight. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the applicant and the neighboring property owner is also here.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff?
One quick question. Does the type of illumination change if it would be a nonconforming? If not, so if this were externally illuminated versus backlit, would that change the nonconforming?
So, in the code, they're only allowed to have a non-illuminated sign, so the fact that it's illuminated at all triggers the application.
Are there any other questions of staff? If there are none, we can open the public hearing at this time, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Carol Lansing. I'm an attorney at Baker Baker Daniels and representing the Star Tribune on these applications. With me is Greg Cardinal, who is also with the Star Tribune, and I'm not sure if Steve Hertz from Nordquist Signs has made it yet, but he was intending to attend, so hopefully if you have questions, he'll be here to address them. The Star Tribune Printing Plant is a 24/7 printing and distribution operation. It also now houses a large number of office employees who relocated there from the Portland Avenue headquarters. The Star Tribune Media Company is the leading regional newspaper in the area and one of the downtown Minneapolis' largest employers. They'd like to have a new, updated, illuminated sign that reflects the activity, the identity, and the community association of that building. We appreciate that the North Loop Neighborhood, staff, and the HPC Commissioners have all recommended approval of this sign. Recently, my friend, Mr. Min, did contact me with some concerns, and I would like to address those with you as I have with him. The specific size and height of the proposed sign, as Meiling indicated, was determined by the size and height of the existing sign. The intent is to cover it over without having to repaint, and they did carefully look at the option of repainting so that that wouldn't have to be a determining factor, but just repainting the sign area is not a de minimis cost, but more importantly, this is a large expanse of metal panel, wall clad. It's a grooved metal panel, and it's painted brown and it's faded over time unevenly, and the risk of painting over some of it and having it look like painted over graffiti is something that's unacceptable, and there's really no way to test it before committing to it. Repainting the entire length of the wall, which Meiling put up a figure of 160 feet for the length of the wall, that was my number, and it's an error that the stretch of the metal portion of the building that would need to be completely repainted, if you took that approach, is more like 230 feet, and the length of the entire facade is about 670. So, it's a very long building facade. And also to let you know that originally, we applied with a 488-square-foot sign, and working with staff, it was reduced to 408 to be as tight as possible to achieve just covering the sign. But regardless of that repainting factor, the size and height of the proposed sign is reasonable and appropriate. It's a very unusually large lot and building, and this will come up. The distance, it's got quite a bit of separation from Mr. Min's property is about 400 feet, and from Plymouth, where it primarily faces, about 500 feet. I mean, that's from Mr. Min's property, more than a block away because of this large parking lot, and this X marks the spot of where we're proposing to have that sign. Also, I think these photos that are in your packet of the sign from, the existing sign from closer than Mr. Min's property and from across Plymouth illustrate that the sign as, you know, be a different sign, but it's going to be the same size, and the sign, as it's going to be seen from those distances, will not look immensely large or looming. Also note that the sign of the letters, when you talk about the illumination issue at night, the size of just the illuminated component is less than 180 square feet. So, if you're using the 180-square-foot limit of a sign in an industrial district as a guide, what will be seen at night will be beneath that amount. And as Meiling indicated, one of the issues that Mr. Min raised was a concern about illumination, and just today, hot off the press, we were able to get some information from the sign company about that. The sign letters are going to be covered with black perforated vinyl, so they appear black during the day, but through the perforations, the light shines and it illuminates white at night, and the logo is covered with a green material, and both of those coverings significantly reduce the intensity of the illumination. The sign company has calculated that as measured from 100 feet away, the illumination of the sign would be only 0.1 foot candle, and city code allows signs to be up to 0.5 foot candle measured from a residential property line and up to 5-foot candles measured from the street or a non-residential. So, at 0.1, 100 foot away, it won't even be measurable when you reach a property line. As explained to me, Mr. Min's concerns are primarily because he is considering a residential redevelopment on his property at the corner. You may recall that he obtained rezoning from I-1 to C-2 for this development in 2009 and returned in 2003 to have a shopping center approvals renewed. I think it's very important to keep in mind that despite the C-2 zoning of this site, it is guided industrial, and that guidance has been reinforced since the 2009 rezoning with the 2010 North Loop Small Area Plan. So, again, this is the Star Tribune site. It's guided transitional industrial. That's where the sign is. This is Mr. Min's property. All of this area in dark purple is part of an industrial employment district, and one of the key policies for industrial properties, especially industrial employment districts, is that residential use is not be allowed to impinge on the industrial use and activity of other properties. So, this application, and I'm kind of foreshadowing what I think Mr. Min might address, but this application should not be viewed or judged through a lens of a potential adjacent residential use. That would be contrary to the policies in the land use guidance for it. That said, for all the reasons we've discussed, I don't believe that this sign would negatively impact a residential use 400 feet, more than a city block away because of the separation, the muted illumination, and the proportionality. Finally, if you have any concerns about this 408-square-foot sign as precedent, this site has a number of unique conditions, so I don't think that should be a concern or factor in your considerations. If you have other questions, I'm happy to address them.
Commissioner Cronzer.
Just maybe a little more detail on the sign. So, this is an acrylic face sign that's on a solid metal background of box, and those acrylic panels that are the letters are covered in vinyl that are either perforated or translucent. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Do you have an example somewhere around town that this would be similar to?
The Marshall sign on the Marshall Student Housing Project just north of Dinkytown has the perforated black vinyl. Otherwise, you know, in terms of, I was driving around at night and thinking about this, you know, there's a lot of like those small billboards that are still in our residential neighborhoods. They're lit up all night. They're larger than this. The Target Field Station is quite a big lit sign, and I think, you know, in these downtown industrial and commercial districts, that kind of signage and light is not that unusual.
Commissioner Lupey.
Yeah, hi. So, just for my own clarification here, it appears as though you had mentioned that the new sign will perfectly cover the old lettering. So, is my correct in saying that the outcome will be that the letters of the new sign are actually going to technically be smaller than the lettering on the old sign because it's within the box and not occupying the whole extent of the box?
Yes, that would be the result.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions of the speaker? I'd just like some clarification. Ms. Lansing, you suggested that the light level would be 0.1 foot candles. Where was that again? Was that at that northwest property?
No, it was much closer than that. It was measured at 100 feet, or it's calculated because the sign isn't up, calculated at 100 feet from the sign. Further away, the measurement would be zero at the property line, Mr. Min's property and Plymouth, zero.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no other questions, we can move on to any other speakers. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Todd Farrar. I am the principal owner, one of the owners of Standard Plymouth LLC. We are the owner that's across the street from the open lot, so we face the sign every day. And the tenant in our building is Standard Heating and Air Conditioning. We built the property in 2008, reclaiming polluted lands and retaining nearly 100 jobs in Minneapolis. When we built the property, we were obligated to observe the Northside Jobs Park Design Guidelines. Those guidelines limit signage and in particular backlighting and internally lit signs. We, in fact, went before the Northside Neighborhood Group and requested a similar sign, not knowing, building a new building for our business, and they pointed out the guidelines to us, and they explained that one of the issues was that, you know, light can be shed upon other properties and influence, you know, people's comfort level with walking and being in the area at night and such. So, I have the design guidelines. So, we, in particular, we think that the proposed sign would be larger than a bulletin board. I have a picture of showing you a little bit about, let's see here, where our property is across. This is our property, and we have a sign up here, and it is not illuminated. We could shed light on it, but we can't, couldn't illuminate the sign. So, us looking, it's kind of hard to see here, but their sign is about there. I don't think this is really an accurate representation, but you can kind of get a feel for, we're across the street. And so, even though it's, you know, even though we're in an industrial zone, I don't see any reason why the designated sign should render our property, you know, susceptible to glowing or, you know, illuminated signage like what would be on a billboard or a highway. So, we're concerned about the brightness of it being in particular. So, we do not find the staff report explanation that repainting the sign would require repainting the whole building. We think you could just repaint the letters that are there, and we don't have any evidence today that would suggest color matching would pose any problems. If the sign needs to be repainted, just repaint the sign. You don't have to repaint the whole wall. So, again, we just think that it shouldn't be an illuminated sign, that it could just be as-is if they wanted to shed light on the sign, and I can provide you a copy of my comments for the record, if that's okay with you.
All right. Yeah, you can send those to the clerk. Commissioner Lupey, do you have a question?
What are your hours of operation?
We are open for business from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and in particular, in the fall and winter, we're there quite a lot. Later than that, but those are our open hours.
Can you explain to me the concern, since you're mainly closed when their light would be on, what the concern is?
Just that the neighborhood standard that we are in, being across the street, is different for them than it is for us.
Consistency is your concern.
Right, exactly. And that was pointed out to us, that the point was that they just didn't want light shed from a business on that street and sidewalk.
Thank you.
They thought that it would impact how it, you know, is walking on the sidewalk. And so, we said, okay, well, so we looked at alternative signs, and they convinced us that if you wanted to light up your sign, you just shed light on the sign, not illuminating onto the other property. So, that is a design guideline that made sense to us, of course. And so, I can give you my comments and then the criteria, which we understand this property is across the street from the design guidelines, but we just think if it's a nonconforming use, see no reason why it shouldn't conform, you know.
All right. Are there any other questions of the speaker? If there are none, we can move on to other speakers. Is there anyone else would like to address the Commission? Please state your name and address.
Mr. President, Members of the Commission, my name is Stephen Min. I'm with Lupe Development Partners, and I'm also in this particular circumstance with an entity called Plymouth and Second LLC. We are the property owners immediately adjacent to the Star Tribune Plant. This is a vacant 38,000-square-foot parcel of land that we acquired from Minna with the help of the city of Minneapolis. I think that's the best perspective I'll leave for you right now. My office address, by the way, for the record, is 1701 Madison Street Northeast, Suite 111. For the record, I just would like to state from the onset that we did not receive any notice from the HPC regarding the hearing on this issue at HPC. We did get the mailed notice from CPC. Had we been given the mailed notice about HPC, we would have appeared and offered to the record, which the staff record does not reflect in HPC nor in this report, that the Northside Jobs Report regarding side guidelines is actually quite restrictive about illuminated signs, backlit signs, internally illuminated signs, and signs in excess of 108 square feet. Now, the Star Tribune Plant is not in the district, but it is on the border of the district, and it just would be incumbent, I think, the HPC should have considered, and I think this panel should consider, that any impact on the boundary of a district should have some mitigating factors to it when you consider whether a nonconforming expansion is necessary. We are not in favor of an illuminated sign being 108 square feet for the same reasons articulated by Mr. Farrar. In particular, we don't believe that repainting the building or a portion of the metal exterior siding is that big a challenge. In my development work, I repaint cementous fiber and metal siding all the time. We have to make repairs. We do patchwork, and quite frankly, the spectrometry by computer to get color matching even to faded paint is quite sophisticated, quite readily available. You can go to Home Depot and get a color match on faded paint today. So, with respect to my friend, Ms. Lansing, I think that issue is quite, not nearly as dramatic a financial impact to our friends at the Star Tribune as they would suggest. They could repaint the existing sign, the background, black it out, and then put a new painted sign of the current size without having to repaint the entire siding of the building, and if that is not the case that this panel wants to decide, I'd ask the Star Tribune to test it out and have a painting expert come in and talk about it. I want to correct one item that Ms. Lansing mentioned. We received rezoning on our parcel in 2009 to C-2 with the express purpose of not being industrial property. We actually requested the staff not further upgrade to C-38. Ms. Elliott was pressing that issue for the entire part of North Loop, and because we wanted to retain a drive-through option for our retail or commercial use at the time, we asked to hang on to C-2. Our parcel is clearly not guided for industrial. If it is, in the record, still guided for industrial, that is a mistake at the staff level, not comporting with the comprehensive plan in accordance with state statute. That's not our fault. That'd be somebody else's fault. But we were changed to C-2 and guided for retail, not industrial. I'd also like to make a point that the C-2 permit, or excuse me, C-2 zoning permits housing by right, 700 feet per dwelling unit, and we would be entitled by right to 56 units before we got into any ministerial bonuses such as underground parking. We would prefer not to have such a large illuminated sign over either a retail use or a residential use on our parcel. If we're able to pursue residential at some future date, and there seems to be willingness with the CPED staff to allow us to do that at some future date, there are no restrictions on the land in terms of the fee title preventing us from making a development agreement change with the staff that would allow for residential use. There's an agreement in place which the staff has agreed to terminate that restricts it to retail-approved use right now, but they have agreed to terminate that agreement, and we are undertaking the possibility of doing affordable housing on this site. If, over our objection, the Commission chooses to permit such a large expansion of the nonconforming use, notwithstanding the much smaller 108-square-foot limitation of the adjacent Jobs Park Guidelines that have just been distributed to you, we would ask the Commission to place three additional commissions on the condition of approval. And I'll articulate these verbally, and I have it written, and I'll give written remarks to the Commission to review. Our first request is that the perforated vinyl screen on the Star Tribune letters proposed by the applicant be a condition of the approval to minimize the brightness of the sign under the expanded nonconformance. The second condition we ask for is that the illumination area be limited to no more than 103 feet on the letters, which is what Ms. Lansing told me was the size of the letters, and 44 square feet for the star, and that the back panel shall never be illuminated as a condition of approval. And finally, based on the data that Ms. Lansing shared with me earlier this afternoon, if the total lumens measured by foot candle at the sign boundary, at the property boundary, if they are no greater than what the current light level is for their parking lot lights, they have parking lot lights, they're shielded and hooded, they're downward. If the lumens and foot candle measurement is no greater than what we're already suffering from the parking lot, then we have no problem with their illumination. But if it's greater than or increases the illumination level, we'd like that to be restricted. Those are the end of my remarks. Mr. President, I'd be happy to take questions or distribute my remarks for the record.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? If there are none, we can move on to any other speakers. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we just have one application before us. Are there any further questions of staff, or would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Lupey.
Yeah, Meiling, so can we just get clarification on whether or not this type of sign is allowed or not? As we've heard, it's not allowed in the district. It's allowed in this district, but not across the street. What is the site ordinance have to say about this?
Okay. So, it's a legal, currently it's legal nonconforming use based on its size because the site has R6 zoning on a portion of it, which is just along the Mississippi River. That's why we're doing this application. The Northside Jobs Park Guidelines, which were adopted in 1997, do not apply to this site at all. They apply across the street. They apply across the street.